Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I want to welcome you all to the Tuesday, June 10th, 2025 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'd like to welcome Stella Bartlett, the Assistant County Veteran Service Officer, to come lead us in our invocation and then our pledges will be led by Bonnie Putnam from our Denton County Sheriff's Office Dispatch, if you'll please stand.
Good morning.
I would like to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones. Go right ahead.
Heavenly Father, we pray to you today to thank you for the opportunity to serve your people. We are all brothers and sisters in Christ, and I'm honored to be able to work here and provide Denton services to our veterans and their families. I pray for the commissioners to have wise choices and resolutions today. In your perfect name, Lord, I know we are also passing the resolution for the women's veterans, and I'd also like to remember those women veterans that are no longer here with us. In Jesus' name, we pray these things. Amen.
Amen.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas law, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, thank you all so much for your prayer and pledges. At this time, I'd like to go to item number one, which is our public comments, and I'd like to, we have one registered speaker today, I'd like to welcome forward Ms. Michelle McMahon from the Denton County Span and Meals on Wheels. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge Eads, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Faulkner, Commissioner Mitchell, and Commissioner Edmondson. I'm Michelle McMahon, the Executive Director of Span Meals on Wheels of Denton County, and I'm here today to express the gratitude of our board and our staff for your support of our mission. I am honored to be a part of such a beautiful nonprofit organization that has served the seniors, veterans, and people with disabilities throughout Denton County for over 51 years. I'll just adjust. Your support of Denton County nonprofits like Span Meals on Wheels demonstrates your commitment to serving the most vulnerable of our community. Over the years, I've had, I have admired your strength and your leadership as we face challenges like a global pandemic and cuts in federal funding. In every case, you've proven your resolve and demonstrated your commitment to serve. Denton County is truly fortunate to have each of you in place to ensure the well-being of every individual. Thank you for understanding the value and impact of Denton County nonprofits and for taking the time to study how you can best support them. Not only do you strive to ensure that nonprofits are functioning as effectively and efficiently as possible, but you also have a heart for each mission and a passion for serving those who need a little extra help. You want to make sure that no one is left behind. I am honored and humble to stand before you today. Judge Eads, I want to know, I want you to know that your mentorship has guided and inspired me.
Thank you.
You are an example of everything I strive to be as a leader, and I will work hard every day to follow your example.
Thank you.
You have a special way of connecting with everyone in your presence, and when you speak, we all feel your authenticity and the power of your words. You are an extraordinary leader.
Thank you.
Last week, you all approved in agreement with Span to, I'm shaking.
It's okay.
Last week, you all approved in agreement with Span to allow us to seek federal grant funds to help us fulfill the needs of an ever-growing population in Denton County. This was a huge step for Span, as it allowed us to get to work on growing our resources so that we can serve more of the people who need us. We are moving as quickly as we can to increase our transportation opportunities, and we look forward to spreading the word throughout the community about our growth. It will take a bit of time to build up our driver pool and our fleet, but we are actively taking steps in the right direction and will report back regularly on our progress. This is an exciting development in the history of our organization, and we are so grateful for your help with getting us to this point. Before I conclude my statement, I just want to make sure that I personally thanked Brooke Hambrook and Capricia Willis for their tireless efforts to make all this possible. It's been such a pleasure getting to know them, and I am beyond impressed at their level of dedication and professionalism. Beyond all that, I can clearly see their passion for serving their community. Commissioners, Judge Eads, you make a positive difference in the lives of so many people in Denton County. Thank you for your service to the community. God bless.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. That's very nice. Thank you. We're very glad to, we appreciate what you all do, and we're glad to be of assistance and continuing to partnership, so thank you. All right. At this time, let's go to item 3A. 3A is approval of a resolution recognizing Stacy Fruth's retirement, and I do believe we have Judge Breeding here. Judge, did you want to come?
What to do?
And Stacy is not with, Stacy, she was not able to join us?
Actually, she is on by line, so be careful what you say.
Okay. Good.
Anyway, Stacy has retired. For those of you who don't, aren't on Facebook or don't follow, she's kind of on a journey. She's awaiting a kidney transplant.
Okay.
So, anyway, we have, just a quick thing.
Yes, ma'am.
If you all remember the storm of May 6th that came through early morning hours.
Yes.
Stacy lives out in Ponder, and she fell in the rain, and her husband, for the first time, did not check the Ring Doorbell, make sure she got off to work okay, and she couldn't get up. So, she says, oh, I'm just going to rest a minute. She finally got up. I'm going to rest a minute, then I could have come in, and my, rest of my staff who's here in the courtroom, Bayla from my court reporter, and my new court administrator.
Hi, good morning. Welcome.
Not new to us, but she, new, new position, kept telling her, just stay home, there's no reason to come in, just stay home. And finally, I get on the text, and I'm like, all right, I'm going to issue an order, I'm going to make it written, you have to stay home, and she's like, okay. So, anyway, I know she's watching now, I think my Bayla has already warned her to put the Tito's down, which is kind of a standard joke in our courtroom, but now that she's retired, I guess she can have Tito's whenever she wants.
That's right.
So, anyway, we obviously are going to miss her. There were some days that we kind of filled in, my Bayla and I and my court reporter, trying to do that job, it's not fun, because you talk to, have to talk to a lot of people who don't understand, well, I just want to talk to the judge, it'll be okay.
Right.
No, you don't get to do that, sorry. Anyway, so, we're going to miss her, but we're very honored to be here for her today, and Stacy, if you're watching, we miss you, we love you, and we'll be seeing you soon.
That's great. Well, that is, one of the great things about these videos is that people don't have to be here, and they can watch it now or later, and as can their family. So, this is a resolution honoring Stacy Fruth for 23 years of service to Denton County. Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the 10th day of June 2025, considered the following resolution. Whereas Stacy M. Fruth, Court Administrator, a loyal employee with the 462nd Judicial District Court of Denton County since April the 2nd, 2022, retired on May 30th, 2025, after 23 years of service. Whereas Stacy worked in the Denton County Clerk's Office as a senior court clerk from February 2002 through February 2015, and was promoted to the Assistant Supervisor in the Criminal Department in March 2015, where she worked until March 2016. In March of 2016, she moved to the position of Court Administrator for the 367th Judicial District Court, working for Judge Margaret Barnes until March 2022. Whereas Stacy demonstrated ethical and professional behavior as a core part of her character, which goes beyond her desire to work and do a good job. Her dedication to treating all citizens who appear in the courts of Denton County as human beings first and foremost, as they seek information and help from court personnel. Whereas Stacy has loyal values for relationships with others and understands friendship and commitment in personal and professional relationships. And whereas Stacy decided to retire after 23 years of service to the people of Denton County so that she can enjoy more time with her family, especially her grandchildren. And now, therefore, it be resolved that Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Stacy Fruth our sincere and grateful appreciation for her dedicated service here at Denton County. We congratulate Stacy on her well-end retirement, extend our best wishes to her for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court this 10th day of June 2025 upon a motion made by?
I move.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Well, Judge Breeding, thank you for being here, thank you for your team being here and supporting your, your colleague. I think that's, your attendance here alone speaks so much about Stacy's relationship with you all and your relationship with her, so I want to, Stacy, if you're watching, I hope you are, thank you for everything, and I wish you all the best on your transplant. Go right ahead, Judge.
So, as in a, kind of an aside, last week when I was here, I was reminded that this is the, let's see, I'm in my seventh year on the bench, and I'm on my third court coordinator and second court reporter, maybe that's a sign I should be retiring.
No.
Since I'm having a birthday tomorrow, and thank you all for the birthday card, I appreciate it very much.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. All right, we have a motion, a second, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Stacy.
We're sending you greetings through the.
Thank you. I thank you all for being here.
Yeah, thank you, ladies.
All right. Next, let's go to item 3B, approval of a proclamation recognizing June 12th as Women Veterans Day in Denton County and any appropriate action. And Paul, did you want to come forward? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners. I've missed you, I've been out for a while, but nonetheless, this Thursday is a very important day in the state of Texas. Back in 2017, the state of Texas authorized Women's Veterans Day to be recognized, and we will be doing that on this Thursday. Today, I have with me, of course, she gave us our invocation, Stella Bartlett, she's our Assistant VSO. In my office, I actually have three women veterans serving Denton County assisting, and I would like to invite all the women veterans that are here today up.
Yes.
I know Stella's here. I don't know if we have any, any other women veterans here today? Stella, why don't you come forward for the proclamation?
Please do.
This is not about me, it's not about my office, this is about the women veteran. Stella's been on board, how many years now, Stella?
Tomorrow will be 14.
Tomorrow will be 14 years, so.
Oh, thank you.
Again, she's been, she's been great to have in the office, assisting a lot of our widemen veterans, sometimes the women veterans don't want to speak to a male Veteran Service Officer. So Stella's been on board for 14 years, assisting in that process, and of course, we have Nikki, who is one of our community navigators, and we also have Mary Rodriguez, who is the greatest admin specialist that we've ever had in that office, not to put Stella down, she was an admin specialist as well. But nonetheless, we have the greatest staff serving Denton County veterans that you can ever imagine. I'm not putting myself on the pedestal, I'm putting my team on the pedestal, because they do a wonderful job. So, with that said, we would welcome the proclamation.
Perfect. Well, good, well, thank you. So this is a proclamation recognizing Women Veterans Day, and whereas Texas salutes and remembers many American female veterans who have courageously and honorably served in the military on behalf of our nation, and whereas women have formerly been a part of the United States Armed Forces since the inception of the Army Nurse Corps in 1901, and have proudly served alongside and supported our nation's military since the American Revolution. Whereas the women veterans community is the fastest-growing subset of American veterans, in Texas, women comprise over 12% of the veteran population, and it is increasing yearly. Whereas the Denton County Veteran Service Office assists women veterans with benefits, and the veteran community navigators help women veterans navigate crisis or hard times. Whereas on June the 9th, 2017, Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas, signed Senate Bill 805, declaring that June 12th be celebrated as Women Veterans Day, so that all Texans recognize the role of women in the military and commemorate the sacrifices of and the valor displayed by Texas women veterans. Whereas on this day, Denton County commemorates the fearless service of women who have served our nation in the armed, in the armed forces, and we honor our female veterans and their families for their remarkable sacrifices and outstanding contributions to our country. And now, therefore, it be resolved that the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas proclaim June 12th, 2025 as Women Veterans Day in Denton County, and encourages all residents to recognize the courage and contributions of American servicewomen and their families who have proudly served our great state and nation by doing their part to protect our land, people, freedoms, and legacy. Done in open court this 10th day of June 2025 upon a motion made by?
I move.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion?
Well, I want to say thank you to all our women veterans.
Yes.
That's impressive, and it's great to hear that it continues to go up, actually.
I'd say thank you also, because, you know, women make the world a better place.
Absolutely.
No matter what we're doing, no matter what's going on, women are involved within the front, on the side, in the back, we're there to help make the world a better place. And I want to thank you all for all that you've done. You know, many people don't know the service that the women provided, doing a long time ago, but you were right there, maybe not on the front line, some of them was on the front line shooting guns, but you were in the back making sure that the guns were loaded, that the home fires was burning, and that with everything that needed to be done was being done to make our servicemen that was shooting the guns better. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
I couldn't have said that better. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Stella, what branch of the service were you in?
The Air Force.
In the Air Force, okay. The reason I'm asking, if I might just piggyback on all this, this month is the 250th anniversary of our U.S. Army, and two, just think, 200, oh, there's an Army guy at the back. Any other Army veterans here? Just think about it, 250 years ago, it was actually during our Revolutionary War, our U.S. Army was founded and has been there ever since. Obviously, the other services have come on since then, but no matter which branch of the service a woman was in, she was doing something that nobody else could do, and we appreciate you so much. Congratulations, and Paul will be seeing you soon, I'm sure, to get more veterans information. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. I do want to thank all, go right ahead.
Yes. Oh, I just, I just want to thank everyone, too. You know, I just finished a book called The Women, it's about women in the, in the nursing corps, and even just within my lifespan, not being recognized as really veterans, and they were out in the war of Vietnam and all, prior to that, and in World War I and II, and so it's really good that we are making sure that we are recognizing our, our women who are also veterans and putting their life out there.
We're very proud that the state of Texas has brought this about, because not every state in the nation is celebrating it on Thursday, so, again, Texas, Texas leads the way.
Yes.
That's what I was going to say, I'm pleased our legislature took this action back in 2017, and the governor signed it, and that it creates an opportunity such as today, in this moment, to pause and think about the people, that, and the women, especially for this commemorative day that gave their contributions. And Commissioner Mitchell, you're exactly right, whether they were enlisted or not, the women have been on the forefront of protecting our country and our interests around the world, and so, whether they're enlisted or not, but this especially calls out their service to the enlisted, and so I appreciate all their contributions, thank you all for what you all do, our VSO staff, thank you all, that team, your care and compassion for men and women alike that are veterans and their families and survivors, right? And so I appreciate all that you all, all that you all do to, to serve with excellence.
And the great state, state of Texas actually has surpassed California, we have the highest population of refugees in the entire nation.
Well, good.
Yay.
They're all coming to Texas.
Because the California veterans are moving here.
Yes.
So, good, well, thank you, thank you. So, any other comments?
Thank you, commissioners, for all your continued support for our office in the Navigator program that you all had a lot to do with, we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, we have a motion in a second, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you for being here.
Let's let Stella have the limelight today.
You're trying to say you get the limelight when you're here?
Okay.
It's not a guarantee. Thank you so much, ma'am. I'm going to put a little on here.
Yes.
Members, let's go back to item two, which is our concierge agenda. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull off of the concierge agenda, or do you have a motion to approve as presented?
It's a move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Today, our concierge agenda today consists of item 2A, which is approval of the order-making appointments, item 2B, approval of budget amendment request 101100 for Public Health to transfer $500 from Public Health Environmental Division Administrative Supplies to Training and Education to cover incurred training costs, and $2,100 from Public Health Clinical Division Primary Health Care to Hospitality Supplies to cover hospitality costs for the remainder of the fiscal year, for a total of $2,600, and any appropriate action. Item 2C, approval of budget and request 101130 for the Public Facilities Department to transfer $1,000 from Construction Management Training Education to administrative equipment to fund replacement equipment needed for employees and training attendees. Item 2D is approval of budget and request 101160 for the Sheriff's Administration to transfer $26,000 from administrative supplies to administrative equipment to cover the cost of earpieces and mounting accessories for SWAT members. All right, let's go to item 4A. 4A is a public hearing on June 10th, 2025, for the approval of the replat of Springer Estate Slots 9R1 and 9R2 Block A, this is 19.002 acres located in Commissioner Precinct 1, with a motion to open a public hearing.
Move to open.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the replat of Springer Acres? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the replat of Springer Acres?
Judge, do you mind if I have?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Apologize. Mr. Bellnap, do you mind coming up and just giving us a quick update and seeing what you guys' recommendation was as well? I'd like to have your recommendation.
Right. So, this is a splitting of a larger lot into two lots, and so the recommendation is to approve the replat.
Perfect. That's all I needed, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone, thank you for the staff reporters, is there anyone else in attendance wishing to speak in favor or opposed to hearing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to closer.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval of the item from Commissioner Williams.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Judge.
You bet, thank you. Next, let's go to item 5A, approval of bill report payments from CSCD, Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, BIT, interest in DA forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today, recommend approve as presented.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have a motion for approval?
All move.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, item 6A, approval of transfer of a 2023 Chevrolet Suburban CS23502 from County Administration to the County Judge's Office, and approval of the purchase of a new Tahoe for County Administration as recommended by the Vehicle Assessment Committee, the VAC, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I just want to make, let everybody understand, anybody that hasn't heard, unfortunately, the one Suburban that the judge was assigned was, there was an accident, fortunately, the judge was not in it, it was a parked vehicle that was hit by another vehicle.
Never totaled a car, it wasn't in.
Yeah, well, I mean, hey, I'll take this, though, it's a lot better, nobody was hurt. But nevertheless, so, we're moving our county administrator's Suburban to the judge, and then obviously replacing the damaged Suburban with a new Tahoe for our county administrator. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that's what that was, we weren't just adding vehicles, just to add vehicles.
Perfect, good, thank you. So we do, any other comments? I do want to, thank you for your leadership on the. Perfect. Good. Thank you. So we do, any other comments? I do want to thank you for your leadership on the committee and for your swift action to get this resolved and taken care of. Thank you, Gustavo, for all y'all's efforts with the insurance claims. All right, any, any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So next, item seven A, report for miscellaneous equipment and software services presented for recording purposes only. Let's go to item seven B. This is approval of a budget amendment request 101110 for the county clerk to transfer $8,600 from a records management fund, fund balance to records preservation fee, microfilm expense to cover a shortage in the line item.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So next, item seven C, approval of budgeting request 101120 for emergency management to transfer $12,000 from maintenance management to capital equipment to fund the purchase and installation of a custom-built flatbed as part of the rehabilitation of a 2017 F-550 single cab chassis, and $4,000 from citizens, citizen emergency response team to training and education to cover speaker fees, travel, and lodging for the upcoming emergency management summit for a total of $16,000. The chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. Next, is item seven D, approval of budgeting request 101140 to transfer $114,594,240 from the 2025 Permanent Improvement Bonds Fund Premium and Bond Proceeds to various trip 22 road projects, and $951,904 from the 2025 Permanent Improvement Bonds Bond Premium to debt issuance costs to allocate the funding from the issuance of the 2025 Permanent Improvement Bonds.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven E, approval of budgeting request 101150 to increase revenues and allocate expenditures, including the acceptance of a donation received for the DWI Court in County Criminal Court Number Five, an amount of $1,000. Any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion?
Thank you for the donation.
Yes, absolutely. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven F, approval of budgeting request 101170 for the Sheriff's Administration to transfer $44,100 from capital equipment to weapons and tasers to cover the cost of 10 short-barreled suppression rifles and accessories for members of the SWAT team.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item seven G, approval of budgeting request 101180 for the Conspel Precinct Six transfer a total of $7,351 from vehicles to various line items to cover the cost of ballistic equipment, computer monitors, ammunition, and a step ladder. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one lateral transfer in juvenile probation, one new hire in juvenile probation, one new hire in the county clerk, four new hires in the sheriff's office, two detention officers once, and two communication officers, two promotions in the sheriff's office, one new hire in the tax office, and one promotion in the tax office. That's it for this.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Next, let's go to item eight B, approval of the transfer of Slots 018VR and 021VR, GIS Analysts from Elections Administration to newly created Slot 003GS and 005GS in Technology Services. The chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion?
Judge?
Yes, ma'am. Frank is here.
Frank, could you come up and explain kind of what's going on with that, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
We do have Frank Phillips, our Elections Administrator here.
Good morning, Judge and members. About two or three weeks ago, I had my senior GIS analyst left employment with the county, and I got into conversations with Kevin Carr about how maybe they could help us with some of the tasks that we need doing. The discussion evolved into, you know, GIS up in IT that have advantages of training that my GIS analyst don't. And we just feel it'd be better if those two slots were transferred to IT. They fall under IT supervision, but they're still dedicated to elections. That way they can cross-train their other GIS analysts, so we have some redundancy there. We do have a former GIS analyst that is now an IT GIS analyst, so they do have a base knowledge going forward. But we just think it would work better for continuity's sake to move it up to IT.
Are those two slots open, Frank?
One is open.
I like that.
And they can be fully utilized into working on other GIS efforts if it's not election-related.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the innovation. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So thank you, Frank, for being here. Next is nine A, or approval of the Department of State Health Services Disease Intervention Specialist Grant Amendment Number Six, Contract Number HHS001120300009 in an amount of $133,089.
Still move.
Second.
By Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is nine B, approval of the Department of State Health Services Dishes Contract for the fiscal year 2026, Hanson's Disease Contract, HHS00132230001, Funding Amendment Number One, an amount of $156,819 effective September the first, 2025 through August the 31st, 2026. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen A, approval of Denton County Office of History and Culture's Grant Proposal Application for the City of Denton's Hotel Oxley Tax Funds for the County Year 2026, an amount of $305,000. The chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen A, approval of inter-local cooperation agreements between Denton County, Texas and the City of Aubrey for collection of special assessments levied by the following entities. One, Jackson Ridge Public Improvement District. Two, the Wind Ridge South Public Improvement District. Three, the Aubrey Public Improvement District, number one. Four, the Duck Point Public Improvement District, as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen B, approval of inter-local cooperation agreements for property tax assessment and collection between Denton County, Texas, and one, the City of Aubrey. Two, Rocky Top Ranch Municipal Utility District of Denton County. Three, the City of Lake Dallas. Four, the Aubrey Independent School District. Five, the Oak Point Water Control Improvement District, number three, as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen C, approval of Amendment Number Three to the Health Services Agreement between Denton County, Texas, and Marathon Health LLC for the Denton County Employee Wellness Clinic, RFP 202583, as recommended by the Denton County Purchase and Director. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So next, let's go to item seventeen, which is Community Events. We'll start with Commissioner Precinct One, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Judge. I just want to congratulate, congratulations to Ryan Senior, Kalen Head, for being recognized as an outstanding track athlete in the 5A category. She took first place in both the 100-meter and 300-meter hurdles, winning a total of five state medals. That's really impressive. And she's, has signed her commitment to USC, so congratulations to her. That's what I've got today, sir.
Perfect. Commissioner Falconer.
Perfect on Women's Day, by the way.
Yeah, that's right.
Women's Veterans Day.
That's right. Perfect. That's right.
Thanks, Judge. I, I've got a couple of things too. I've got that our CFPISD law students were in a Supreme Court case contest, and Creekview High School Law and Criminal Justice Academy moot court teams secured the national championship at that Harlan Institute competition. It's the, and it's also the school's fifth time to do that. So that's not just in the state, that's national. They did great. Lewisville Chamber also is awarding Volunteer of the Year, and that's Kayla Bowman, who received that at the Annual Gala Award. She's the Director of Community Engagement for Communities in Schools in North Texas. And then just a few events in Carrollton, Sounds on the Square on the 13th in downtown Carrollton, and then in Corinth, the Friday Night Flicks, Inside Out, and that's the 13th at 6:00 PM at the Agora. Across, no, let's see. Oh, no, we have a Enfrisco Flag Day Ceremony on the 14th. That is nine to noon, and that is at the Warren Sports, the Freedom Meadow at Warren Sports Complex. And then we have, in Little Elm, we have the Farmer's Market on the Lawn. That's at the lawn, June 28th. And then that is all I have. Thanks so much.
You bet. Commissioner Mitchell?
I want to first congratulate all the running-up candidates that were this weekend, the winners, and certainly the losers that actually put forth an effort to do that. So I want to congratulate them. And I actually have one of the winners here with me that drove me to court this morning. Mr. Tipton, Lonnie Tipton, drove me to court, and that seat that he actually won was my seat when I was on the council, so. Thanks, Lonnie.
In good hands.
Yes. Okay. Take care of that seat.
I'm going to say that seat's probably a new seat.
Yeah, they did get some, they did move.
Chairs.
Chair.
The chairs.
In Flower Mound, we have the Lakeside Music Service Series on June 13th, 7:30 PM, at Lakeside Parkway, excuse me. Holland Village, we're celebrating Holland Village, June 14th, 7:00 AM to 5:30. Doubletree Ranch, Lake Dallas, Lake Dallas City Trade Days, June 13th, AM to noon, 8:00 AM to noon. And Louisville, Sound of Louisville, June 10th, 7:00 PM to 9:30 PM, on Wayne Ferguson Plaza. Sorry, guys, I got choked up. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Edmondson?
Thank you, Judge. First of all, let me remind everyone, June 14th is Flag Day, and Flag Day is so important. Our flag represents us, and so I urge all of you to celebrate appropriately. Out at Robeson Ranch, just drive out to Robeson Ranch because we're going to have a wonderful American flag display all up and down the main street into Robeson. It just, it always gives me chills when I see it every year. So come see Flag Day at Robeson Ranch. We'd love to have you. In Argyle, they have a middle school beam signing, which is, you're invited to come out and sign your name into Argyle ISD history. In Denton, we've got Twilight Tunes on the 12th, on the courthouse on the square, and that will be outside the courthouse on the square. Flower Mound, we've got Community Activity Center's 17th Birthday Bash. This is the 17th birthday for the Community Activity Center, so they're going to have snacks, prizes, giveaways, and more. In Crum, they have a community market and a benefit car show, and that will be on June 14th from nine to one. And don't forget to wave your flags on that day. Trophy Club, Movie in the Park, they're going to show Mufasa, which is part of the Lion King story, I believe. And they'd like you to bring along Sherab blanket to enjoy the movie with family and friends. And also in Trophy Club, you can have breakfast with Tiffany, their mayor, and catch up on everything that's going on. One thing that I'd also like to mention is that when you have these outdoor events, please remember we do have unusual weather sometimes here in Texas. And I'd like to just publicly thank the judge and the Emergency Operations Center for the very strategic texts that they were sending out. All of you who want can sign up so that you will get those as well from our operations, Emergency Operations Center. It was very helpful to know what was going on, even though all, thank goodness, of those huge windstorms and possible hailstorms did not happen to us. So thank you, Judge.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, I think it's a good point to give a shout out to our Denton County Office of Emergency Management, and their good efforts on Sunday evening, and we had the sheriff's office there, and our weather volunteers. You know, we couldn't do it without our weather spotters, our volunteer individuals, and also our partners at the National Weather Service for mobilizing and, and taking care of things. I was visiting the sheriff earlier that day and make sure everybody was mobilized for that weather that came in, and thankfully, we were blessed, and it was, it was not significant as we anticipated. I want to give a couple of shout-outs to, number one, for our Denton County 911 and the Denton County Office of Emergency Management. They launched an art contest. I think that's a lot of fun for students in grades K through 12. This contest is bringing awareness to emergency preparedness, and I think emergency preparedness starts young. It's really a mindset. I'm glad that we're educating our youth. Check out our Denton County, Texas Facebook page and the Office of Emergency Management's Facebook page, or DentonCo911Facebook to learn more details. We'd love to have y'all involved if you're watching. And I want to give a big shout-out, Denton County shout-out to the town of Flower Mound. Their communications team won two awards recently. They won the first place in the special or one-time programming category for the 2024 State of the City video, and they also received a second place in the public service announcement category for the Flower Mound Fire Department Cribs video. So let's go ahead and go to item fifteen A, Executive Session, Texas Governor Code 551072, Deliberation Regarding Real Property Closement to Liberate the Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property. If deliberation open media would have a detrimental effect on the position of a governmental body and negotiates with a third person. And it is 9:42. We're Executive Session.